Yours, okay?
Yep.
Okay. Well, let's go ahead and start. It's five after seven convening the planning commission on August 18, 2021. All commissioners are... Well, I don't see... Yeah, Larry, he was going to, he's in Montana, and he was gonna zoom in, but maybe hasn't gotten signed in yet, so... But we'll go, we'll go forward. Severn, would you lead us in the pledge? And Ted, would you offer invocation for us tonight? Ben, I see you're signed in. Are there any public comments which you might wish to make in a couple of minutes tonight before we get started?
No, I'm just here to listen.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any others, so... We will move on. First item of business is our minutes for our July meeting. Made a few corrections to those based upon your reviews and a couple, some typos and whatnot. Send ball, send it all out, everybody. Were there any other changes or corrections that weren't made? Corrected that, so, yeah. Given that, I'll take a motion then on the minutes, July meeting.
I'll move that we approve the minutes for the July 2021 meeting.
Okay.
Second.
First. Okay, Laurie, second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Voting unanimous. Next item that is on the agenda is a discussion of review of our current ordinance as it relates to sidewalks and bike paths. I sent you all a copy of a draft which I had LEI do. And what my thoughts are is to however we decide to address this, but make this an option in our development and construction standards. Not that it will replace what we have, but make it an option that the city can use if we want with the developer to, to change the bike and sidewalk and walking path. So that's kind of the direction that I'm headed with it. We'll need to have a public hearing and before that, I think we've had a, would present it to the city council to see if there's any changes that they would want to make. And the only thing we're really changing is the, is the identifying a bike trail and a bike path and sidewalk. And the width of those. So, one has to do with a, with two different kinds of streets we've got in the city. Primarily like Woodland Hills Road or Summit Creek. Below Summit Creek, I should say, where Four Seasons, they don't have rock lined ditches there. They have curb and gutter. And so it's envisioned that most of the development that would happen in the flatlands down there would be curb and gutter type street configuration rather than rock lined ditches. Rock lined will continue to be used in Summit Creek and going down Summit Creek Road and up in Thousand Oaks area. So those are the two, the essence of the two different diagrams. So...
As far as the undeveloped lots in the old part of Woodland Hills, like over here, nothing?
Nothing. They were never developed with ditches. And at this point in time, any new homes that get constructed over there, ditches or curb and gutter are not part of that site plan. So if a person, we, we do require culverts under the driveways. And you, you can see some of the result of that with these rainstorm we've had the last couple of days, and the roads are quite dirty. And their gutters are just washing out onto the road and particularly at intersections and so forth. But at this point in time, there's no plans to do anything different with those, with that part of the city where we don't currently have curb and gutter or rock line ditches. So the only thing I ask on LEI is put these together is kind of, is a draft form. The one where we have, for example, shows 56 feet of Collector Street cross section without curb. So this would be the rock line ditches. And as you can see there, on the right side and on the left of the road, there's six feet in width that's allowed for the rock line ditches. And to the side of that, and this encompasses the city right of way, 56 feet. And that's standard, what the city has had, what we continue to have for the main, for all of our roads in the city. It's 56 feet wide.
Right of way.
Right of way, the road right of way, which belongs to the city.
Yeah. The road is not that wide.
No, that's correct. The road in most instances, we're looking at 33, 29, 33 feet wide.
Is that 56 feet in all of the old section also?
Yes, it is. Now, what, what the city's found is people get in their head that asphalt is...
Their property line.
Is the end of their property line. So people oftentimes have put things up outside of that along the edge of the road. And right now, the city hasn't done anything about it. I don't know if they ever will, but some of those things are decorative things are on city, city property.
I think it's Big Thomas.
So... So is your question?
Yeah, can I, can I bring this up?
Sure.
So I'm looking at the diagrams you sent us, and I guess this is gonna go to LEI or whoever becomes a replacement. Is three inches of asphalt sufficient for the construction traffic we have? Again, I'm looking at current roads as I ask that question for future roads. Is that sufficient for the heavy machinery we have going up and down the roads?
I don't know, I'd turn to Ted.
Yeah, it's all mine.
That's what, that's what we have had.
Yeah, so when you look at asphalt, road, road sections are the entire section, right? So the structural part of the road is typically not the asphalt. It's what's underneath the asphalt, the road base thickness, the subbase thickness. Those are more important often than the asphalt thickness. Because that's what provides your structural stability to the asphalt. And really, we live in a little bit of a, so they've got a 10 eight, 10 inch subbase and an 8 inch compacted road base, which is not bad. The 10 inch is where you really gotta look closely at it. A lot of cities have this standard of three inches, and then it varies on the subbase, what they put in. Some are anywhere from 20 inches down to 10 inches or eight inches. That's really what we would have to look at, I think, more, even more so than the asphalt. Asphalt, you know, three and a half, four inches, three to four inches is usually typical for a lot of city streets. But it's the subbase and base, I think, that are probably even more important than the asphalt. The difficulty we have in this community, when I tell people, because our asphalt cracks, it's not an asphalt issue, it's a living on an alluvial fan is part of the problem. We're just constantly moving alluvial fans, so it's really what you get in the subgrade is where you're gonna build your structural stability. So, good point, John. But I think as much as the asphalt, you gotta look at the rest of it.
So 10 inches of subbase, what, what material would the subbase consist of?
Usually we consider that kind of a structural material, so it's like a three inch minus type, compactable, structural fill. Doesn't have a lot of clays in it. Yeah, usually less than 15% fines. You don't have a lot of expansive clay in it.
What, what percentage is that compacted to? What, what's our requirement?
So I think ours is 95, APWA is 96. And that's probably about as good as you can get.
Yeah, and what about the road bases, is it, is it 95% compaction as well?
I think it's 95 in ours, 96 APWA. And that's just one thing I'm gonna toss out here. And at a future time is, is our standards versus APWA and how we make that work together. Make some suggestions there, but you know, it, it, some of the geotech reports that we've looked at have said probably in excess of 10 inches would be needed on some of our streets.
Just for instance, I'm watching those three cul-de-sacs that Robert's putting in down there right now for that new phase. You know, as you start climbing a hill, you start having more cut and fill, which is technically below your subbase and your road base. Is there any requirements for that on compaction?
Depends on how far they go down. So anything they dig out, they have, they have to compact, at least what we typically require. Anything that's excavated has to be restored back to 95% compaction. Whether they can do that with native material or have to import material, their choice. But if they go down to an uncompacted material, like a natural grade, then you don't want, you know, they don't recompact that because that's already compacted, right? If they disturb, they have to recompact to that 95%. And usually up here, that's difficult to do with native, so you almost have to import.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Not, we're not changing any of that, so that's...
I just wanted to know that as we're moving forward, if there's a way to maybe minimize... I mean, what I see now is, is a lot of road maintenance that's ongoing. And, and is there a way to maybe minimize that in the future through this stuff, so?
And that's a good point, I think maybe at some point in, maybe that's, or later, we look at the subgrade. And see...
And that's something we may want to do with, with the general plan. As we get out and start looking at that again and looking at that criteria and see if we want to change that at all or not.
And the best way to do that would be to get like a geotech. And, and, and I think developers often do have geotech reports. At least a lot of the cities we work in require developers to get a geotech report done. And then geotech will make recommendations on your road sections if you ask them for it. And so they'll come back and they'll say, you need this much subgrade, this much base, this much asphalt. They'll make a recommendation now. Most cities like this have a standard, this is our typical. So it may not hurt to look at a few of those if we have them from Robert or whoever, and just see what they've recommended and maybe reevaluate what our standard is.
Okay.
Thanks.
So this, this is showing off to the side a bike trail on this, on, on, on the our cur, our rock line ditch road of eight feet on one side of the road. Again, just a proposal, it keeps it within the 56 foot right of way. If, if that's something that the city wants to look at of putting a bike trail on, on future, future roads. Or if, if there's major repairs down to one particular road, potentially it could be done at that time. But it's not envisioned to go back and put that in existing roads, at least at this point in time. And it would be an option for the city to look at with a developer and decide if that would work with what they're, with what they're doing.
Does the city have an overall trail or bike plan?
In the general plan, there is some. We discuss it in the general plan.
There's encouragement to have one, but there isn't a layout per se as to, as to where they ought to be. And we've probably been a little bit remiss as we've worked with developers and not giving greater attention to that, but we're, we're going to, we want to. We, when Summit Creek initially came to us, they had plans and they put in some, just some dirt, some dirt paths. There became an issue with the rest of the city using that with their homeowners association being hesitant primarily because of insurance reasons, as I understand it. So, but we've continued to talk to Summit Creek over the last number of years, and I like to think we're making some progress and have to come to some understanding where the, where city residents would be, those trails would be open for city residents to use. Now, one thing we need to keep in mind in, in these kinds of things is there's greater expense with them. Now, not only do we have a road to maintain, but we potentially have a bike trail, asphalted bike trail or whatever, that we're also going to have to, to maintain. So those are some issues. I understand from talking to Robert Nelson that that's one reason, a number of years ago, the city decided to only put sidewalks on one side of the road because of the maintenance costs that were associated with them. So, again...
And the only reason I bring that up is because there's, there's on occasion where we have cities will put together like a Parks Recreation and Trails master plan. And they identify where they want walking paths and bike trails in this plan. So then when developers come in, because they want connectivity throughout the city. So when developers come in, they can say this standard applies to these locations. And the other standard that doesn't have these apply to these locations, so they know where to build what. Just a planning aspect.
That, taking that approach with it. And we have a trails committee now in the city.
Yeah.
And so we've got some people, and they're, they're interested in trails. And so we've got people who could spend some time looking at that and, and looking at where those might, would be best to incorporate and whatnot throughout the city.
And then the second part of that is, is because a lot of these, like we say, a bike path, what are the requirements with the bike path? We've got a width. And do we identify it as asphalt or just a bike trail? So just bike trail, so is there somewhere where we identify what's required with the bike trail? Like, for example, the center skipped striping. And a lot of them will have little bike painting markings every so often and a few things like that, just requirements that come with the bike path.
Yeah.
A lot of times. I don't know if we have that somewhere or if it's...
Or is it just dirt?
This one would be paved.
Okay, okay.
So then we, I think, maybe just a few updates to LEI, you know, give them, give us a thickness on the bike trail thickness and then identify it as paved. And usually it's a, yeah, it's like a six over three or something like that, six inch road base with a...
Does that need to be...
Two and a half inch asphalt or something?
Yeah, well, the sidewalk labeled as cement or...
That's probably in our standard, I'm guessing we've got a typical detail for that.
We do, because we're using that now.
Yeah.
So, but...
With a bike path, we probably don't have a typical detail for, I'm guessing, that would identify the, either paint markings or pavement thickness or base course under it, stuff like that. Maybe that's a few things, a few things. That was one thing I've thought about is kind of get more and more involved with this, with the city aspects. Is that some point like to take the standards and make them cohesive, I guess? Because we've got APWA, we've got city standards.
City standards should be, we've adopted the APWA, so...
Yeah.
That's what we really need to follow.
Yeah, yeah, and a lot of times what we'll do is, because cities do this quite often, APWA they'll adopt. But they have some specific things they like that are unique to their city that may be different from APWA. So what they do is you do what you call a supplemental spec. So, and it's something you, you include with a city standard, so your APWA governs. And then when you put in the table of content, you say APWA section or standard, whatever it is, and you list that. But then where you want to supplement that with something unique to your city, it's basically the same standard, only it starts with an S, which means supplemental standard to APWA. So they use APWA and then you have a supplemental standard.
That would more likely go into the development and construction standards.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, and that's where I think, at some point, I think it'd be worth taking just a little bit of time to put that all as a cohesive document. Then when developers come in the city, I mean, it's pretty straightforward, what applies where and... One thing I've thought about for a while, and it's, maybe it's a winter project that I could, I mean, it's just been really crazy lately, but that I'd be willing to take a look at, just so we can get it all to gel together and...
Sure. Better.
Yeah, and then you could pull out what parts would apply specifically to lots versus what applies to development.
Yeah.
As part of that.
David? All right. Up to the microphone? All those work, they're just extra there, so.
So, a, a couple of points real quick. The first is, and it, it probably is because of history of the city or whatever, but when we use the word trail, that conjures up different meaning to different people. Some people think about a bark amulch trail that winds through the trees and goes down ravines and so forth and so on. And that's what they think of when we're talking about a trail. Then there's this bike trail, and that's more of an asphalted trail, at least in my mind. And so my encouragement to all of you is to be extremely specific in how you address these things, so that it's really clear to people what you're talking about and where. A great example is, you know, we talked about trails a while back and people were like, why in the world would you put a trail right alongside Summit Creek Drive? That makes no sense. Well, they were thinking the bark amulch trail. And I would agree with them, that's dumb. But a bike trail makes perfect sense there. So that's the first point. A paved bike trail makes perfect sense there. Second point, and I think this is critically important. If you have not digested the general plan, you need to. So in the general plan, there actually is a map that identifies various trails, some being bike and some not. So those are actually in there as well as definitions of some things. Now, it doesn't get down to asphalt depth or anything like that, but it does cover that, so I... So along with that point, let me kind of back up a little bit. When we were putting together the general plan, and Wayne and I were on the planning commission at the same time, and so was and, and Jeremy Searle. We, Jeremy invited, and they were these transportation folks from Denver, Colorado or whatever. And, and we did a walkabout with them where we walked from here all the way up to the park and around a little bit down Summit Creek Drive and so forth. And then they came back with recommendations. And, and that was actually what led to us getting rid of the four-way stops, for those that are wondering, was because they recommended that we get rid of those because four-way stops on long roads don't make sense.
Main thoroughfare.
So that was one piece that came out of that. The other piece that came out of it was this idea of kind of more natural traffic calming, which then led to us kind of thinking, well, what could we do along both Woodland Hills Drive and Summit Creek Drive that would help kind of calm things down on those two roads? And tra-
What do you mean calm things down?
Calm.
How?
Speed, slow.
So there's all kinds of calming. Yeah, if you, yeah, speed. So if, a, a really great example of traffic calming in Utah County is actually the BYU campus. If you haven't driven up there lately, they've taken, for instance, they put a roundabout in. They've taken out Campus Drive, half of it. They've added elevated and kind of sloped walkways, so crosswalks across different roads so that the pedestrians don't have to go down, the cars have to go up. And just, I mean, it's insane what, how much, how many millions of dollars they've spent on traffic calming there. And it's because a student was killed on, on a road. And so they wanted to add and just slow the cars down and get them to think of it less like a road and more like, you know, a parking lot kind of a experience. There's various things you can do. So if you ever drive along a city street and you see that the city street comes in and then it kind of goes out again, that's traffic calming. There's, they, they gave us a booklet and there were probably six or seven different things you can do to calm traffic. Well, the trails along Woodland Hills Drive and along Summit Creek Drive, which are mentioned in the general plan, both came out of that experience. And so it was based on ideas to get bicycles off the main road and onto a, onto their own asphalted section that would then also slow down cars as well because they're not, I mean, it just looks a little less like a like a freeway and more like a kind of a city street, calm street. Adding in a few trees here and there, that kind of thing to just kind of calm things down. So anyway, those, those were where those ideas came from, and I thought that that history might be useful as you discuss this.
Good, thank you. I, I don't know if any of you in the last week or so or where have you been over on Summit Creek Road? The speed limit's been reduced by five miles an hour over there. Speed limits are 30 over there now, not 35. And I, I don't know if those are gonna be permanent or if the city's kind of experimenting a little bit with that to see if that will, yeah, obviously will slow some traffic. a little bit with that to see if that will, yeah, obviously will slow some traffic down. Not everybody, but anyway, it's a, it's a start. So, just interesting. Okay, so.
To go along with what David said, you know, in the, in the general plan, as he said, there are trails that are in there. And I remember when we had the public meeting, there was one property owner that noticed that there was a trail marked along the back of her property, and she just went ballistic. She said, you mean somebody could be walking along the, my, that property line? And we said, yeah, that's true. Jeremy took the fun of that, I think. I was just there.
It was on city property, it wasn't on their property, but she, they didn't want somebody, you know, walking the back of their house. So, but the main, it shows, I mean, a trail along the side of the road, you know, the general plan does. So it leaves a lot to be desired and, but nevertheless, it's there.
Again, if you go to the transportation section of the general plan, and I realize that you all debated and kind of came up with different terms for the road, which I'm grateful you did that, I think that makes a difference. But on a collector road, which, and I'm using the old terms, not the new ones, but it has a ten-foot path with an eight-foot called a swale.
Mm-hmm.
In between the actual road and where the path is, and it's a ten-foot path, so it actually lists for that fifty-six feet that we have across the road, how that would be divided up.
So those are some things that, as we put together a new general plan, that we certainly want to further address and see where, what some of the the best alternatives would be as far as a design goes there. So these are kind of interim ideas or thoughts. The, the other diagram is a, is a collector and local street with curb. So this would be the kind of road that you'd find down in Four Seasons. And this shows a sidewalk on one side of six feet and a bike path of twelve feet on the other side of the road. Again, just throwing things out there, taking the full spectrum of the right-of-way, fifty-six feet, into consideration. So all that would be city property. Tony, I'm interested in your views and thoughts with, with, with this. If you think that the width or anything else we ought to consider changing or adjusting. Again, these aren't going to take the place of what's in there now, but they would be alternatives to follow. Eventually could take the place, but right now, that wouldn't be the plan. Just be another couple of diagrams out there that, that we could use if we wanted to implement this within the development.
To me, in the area down below where the homes are really close together, it looks a lot like downtown Salem or Spanish Fork. And I'm used to seeing sidewalks on both sides, and I'm wondering if it will look funny to have a bike path on one and no sidewalk.
And this, this twelve-foot bike path is, is more designed for, not in a, well, they're all going to be residential areas, but.
So it's more the main road?
Yes.
But what about the side streets where the homes, will those have sidewalks?
That's, right now, half of, half the street is a sidewalk in those cul-de-sacs down there.
And the other half?
There isn't one.
One side?
Yeah.
Other street.
And the other half just has their lawn or whatever coming up to the curb?
Yep.
Herb and gutter, they have gutter.
And the reason was for that a number of years ago, the city council decided that they didn't want all the maintenance that would be required and just to put sidewalk on one side of the street. I personally don't like that aesthetically or or purposefully. I think people live in a cul-de-sac, they're looking for a sidewalk to walk all the way around or, you know, through a number of different cul-de-sacs and not just on the north side of the road. So that's something that, but our, our construction standards, that's what it is. So we would need to change that. And again, that needs to be, we need to talk to the city council about that, and it's at an expense for the city to maintain those sidewalks and cracks and repair them and everything else. And so is that something the city wants to undertake? I, I, I would hope that they would, because I think that is, is a very attractive feature to have with the sidewalks going all in the cul-de-sac and on, on the street.
I agree.
So.
But is that what we're discussing tonight?
Well, it will be part of the discussion. This, these, these don't show the sidewalk on both sides, but we can. That's, when we talk about, talked about the criteria, what kind of criteria do we want to establish? Do we want sidewalk on both sides of the road? What do we want to recommend to the city council that they consider and adopt? So it's, it's open.
I think if the houses are close together, quarter acre lot or so, they should have sidewalk all the way around, but.
Well, the only problem I have with that is that down in Four Seasons, it's R-19. Up in Summit, it's R-19. So are you going to require sidewalks in every R-19 zone? Because we're not requiring sidewalks up in Summit, and it's the same zone.
So when, if we required it, what would happen to the existing homes? I mean, you're just in the new development or in the bare, one bare lot, they would have to put a sidewalk in the next door?
Developers, who puts a sidewalk in?
And if it's already developed?
It's already developed and it's.
And it's up in the city.
Well, then you can't force them to do something that wasn't in place when they built it, basically.
Well, the city would have to install the sidewalks.
The city would have to, or you would just leave it?
Either way, the city decided they could either leave it or install it, but you couldn't force it on a homeowner who is already.
Yeah.
When the lot development's already built.
Yeah. In fact, Robert Nelson said he thought it was kind of a dumb decision years ago when they just said one side. He was prepared to do both at his expense, but the city didn't want to have that expense as far as maintenance goes. And, and so that, that was a dish decision that the city made at the time. So, again, if, if that's something that we support, city council support, that can go into the criteria, and somebody wants to do more development, we say you need to put sidewalks both sides of the street. Yeah, some of them don't, don't have sidewalks on both sides, but it's the way it is, but your development, that's a criteria.
And, and there is a lot of farmland down on the bottom end of the city that it someday could be developed, even as a planned unit development, because there are fifty-acre lots down there that come, could come under the PUD ordinance, and we could conceivably then have the sidewalks all the way on both sides of the street. But for the ones that we're doing now, it's a little light.
Yeah.
For Summit, for Four Seasons and, and really for Summit, too. I mean, if we say, hey, R-19, R-19.
R-19.
It is 119, isn't it?
Yeah.
All R-19s need to have a sidewalk.
You can't say all future R-19s need to have a sidewalk?
You, you could.
You could, yeah.
If this is in place, you know.
But do we really want sidewalks up? We don't want sidewalks in the old part of Woodland Hills.
We don't?
No.
Why?
That, that has been the, that because it's natural.
I don't disagree with that. I like the mountain community.
Yeah, people wanted to have a little bit more rural looking and sidewalks all over.
It is a little more dangerous, but.
I think it looks haggard and old, and I think it would look better with sidewalks, but.
Well.
ATV trails.
Particularly in the lower part of the city.
It's unmuted, so.
Well, I think of our future development, I'd hate to see us have it look haggard and cheap. Odd, you don't see that anywhere else.
I can move over there and you can be here.
So are you, are you generally supportive of these layouts?
At least, yeah, and I think more would be better.
I got just one semantics.
Say again?
One, I think this, this one right here, so on this one we call it a bike path, this one a bike trail, consistent bike path.
Making the same?
Yeah, and it's consistent also with the general plan, what they call in the general plan. You see how one says bike trail, one says bike path for the same callout.
Good point. It was April scratched that instead of Grace.
Oh, well, both of them, maybe.
Yeah, maybe both, because when I was here, April came in, opened the door.
Yeah.
Turned it around, came over here.
Yeah, Amber said she had stuff under her fingernail.
Would there be any suggested width changes that we would, are you comfortable with this or?
So another question I have, or actually just a couple, so, general plan, we do say ten feet on our bike paths, we got twelve and eight.
And that, the reason I did that was to fit in the right-of-way.
The right-of-way.
So, but.
But the twelve feet, does the twelve feet really fit in the right-of-way?
If you redo, because that one's got a two-foot curb on it.
Thirty-six feet or it won't.
With, with the six-foot sidewalk on the other side, a seven-foot shoulder.
Then you're going to have twelve feet on one side and ten feet on the other, or eight feet on the other, because you've only got twenty feet to play with.
But that's, that's, that's why those numbers were picked, because they kept everything within the fifty-six foot right-of-way. So I'm not, I'm not married to that. I just, those, that's why those were picked, if we want to have more room. For example, there's a two-foot shoulder there off the road. On the other side, there's a seven-foot planter and a six-foot sidewalk. I went over right now, they're five-foot, they're five-foot sidewalks, or that's what they're supposed to be. And they look okay, but they still not quite wide enough to my, to my view, and that's the reason I put six foot in there. So. Do you want to think about that some more? We can talk about it next meeting with some more thoughts and ideas and.
Yeah, maybe have a chance to review these just a little more. I did look at them, but.
Okay.
Just review them a little more.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do that.
I'd like to go kind of digest this general plan a little bit, too.
Okay. And again, we're, it's probably up for redoing the end of this year, end of next year. And so if there's things that we want, as you're looking at the general plan, if there's, give thought to that, if there's things that you feel we need to discuss further and make some changes with, make some notes on it and, and, because we're, we're at that time period, we're going to be updating it. I wanted to revisit a little bit, I know we made a decision, I guess it was last meeting, about shipping containers and semi-traders. As I've thought of using them as an accessory building. As, and I, as I thought more about that, I, I guess, developed a little bit of second-guessing myself in the process and, and wondering if that's, if that's what we want to do. We have a part in our ordinance that does not allow semi-traders to be used as storage devices in our city. So we didn't, I didn't realize that when we, when we were looking at the idea of having containers and semi-traders, allow them to be, to be used with, again, some modification, taking the wheels off and probably putting a skirt on them and whatnot. But anyway, I, I thought, now, maybe we didn't shake that out enough to, at least in my And the other issue with, with the containers, we've got a situation now where a person's been bringing containers on their yard and using them for storage, because the city doesn't have probation against it. We've got one that we approved over a year ago with, with, with the property owner agreeing to put some siding on it and window and whatnot and kind of dress it up a little bit. He hasn't done that yet. So my, my concern is getting into a situation where we're approving those to be accessory buildings, and then the owner doesn't do anything with them. And then the city's faced with, I know there was a provision that we, we put into the ordinance about being able to get rid of them if they don't, if they're not modified in a way that they're planned to. Reality is, the city won't get rid of them. I mean, we see that with so much in the city now. And do we want to be stuck with, does somebody want to be stuck with a container, storage container, running along the property line that's just sitting out there? I don't think we want that as a city. So the problem in my mind becomes kind of an enforcement issue, at least with the, with the storage containers, even though we've made some provision in there, there's, there's a lot that has to be done to get, to get rid of that, even going to court, versus just saying those are prohibited from being used and not allowing to be used and be done with it. So I wanted to throw that out and get your thoughts and views on your, what you feel about it.
So where's the provision that says no semi?
Just. Find it. Yeah. I didn't.
Not a big highlight.
We have lost audio. I'm not sure if it's me or everyone.
I can hear you, Doral, I'm not sure if we can hear them or if they can hear us.
Here it is. It's in Storage and Repair It's paragraph C. Says it shall be unlawful for the owner of any lot in any residential zoning district to permit the open storage or outdoor parking of a semi tractor trucks and or semi-trailers, bulldozers or carriers, cranes or any other similar equipment or machinery unless parked thereon while in use for approved construction on such lot.
You know, I I remember reading that and and my perception was this was a big rig driver. And you can't park your semi on your lot. Not be used as a storage container. It doesn't really say anything in there about it being used as a storage container, but you can't have be it, it can't be stored on your lot. So if you if you're a semi truck, you don't like what's his face?
Somebody who's a truck driver.
Yeah. They can't park his big rig on his lot in Woodland Hills. That's what I assumed that could be, not having anything to do with accessory buildings.
I can see that in there.
Yeah, that sounds like what it's saying, but could it be tweaked to?
Well, I mean, you know, we've we've said you can't do it. So I don't see that there is a conflict between what we're saying with an accessory building, because we didn't really say.
We did pass a semi-trailers being able to be used as accessory buildings.
Well, okay, and I and I guess what I'm saying, I don't see the conflict between the two.
And there may not, and as you're, as I can see, and I may, I'm misreading it. It talks about permit the open storage of it, so I can see your, you know, it's not being used as a storage place, it's itself being stored on a lot.
It's being parked
Yeah.
on the lot.
Like, I can see that. So let's let's come back then to the other question, are are you, are we all comfortable with going forward with 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 what we had proposed? Then as as to allowing semi truck trailer and storage containers to be used as accessory buildings?
Do we know whether or not we have anyone using a semi trailer as storage right now?
To my knowledge, we don't have any.
Now's the time to kill that, then.
Say say again?
Now's the time to kill that before somebody does it.
Well, yeah. But there are, somebody put a container on their property. They're gonna be a.
Is that the only container we know of?
No, they're they're gonna leave their house and they're gonna store stuff in their container from their house and rent their house for a while. But they got a storage container on their lot where they're putting their stuff in storage. No, it's like, it's on Woodland Hills Drive.
Okay.
There's, and then there's another one that is up on I don't know if it's Eagle Nest or one down from that, where it is a accessory building, but we did approve that one.
It's on Eagle Nest.
Is it Eagle Nest up there?
Just before you get the loafer, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, that's that's the one that was too close.
Yeah, and they've set it back, yeah. And he said that he's gonna still dress it up, so. But we've got another person who's moved four storage containers on his lot. And is back cemented over, put a cement top over all of them and using them as storage.
Except for then. Or should be?
There's, no. No, he didn't get approval to do any of it or anything, he just did it. So that's a kind of another situation the city's gonna be faced with and how to how to deal with that. But anyway, those are just my reservations, now we've we've approved it, and if you all still feel comfortable with that, or if we want to take out the semi trailer.
So are you thinking that we need more of a penalty or a way of making sure that they dress it up or a bond or some building permit or something?
And we had, we had a penalty in there.
We did.
Yeah.
I think, I think John felt like the penalty wasn't enough, there was no way you could move it off the lot for five hundred dollars.
Yeah, and I think we upped, may have upped it to a thousand.
Okay.
So. But then again, we're faced with a situation, what the city you go to court, you have to go to court resources and everything to to enforce that. And then you got somebody for months on time or years even maybe who kind of thumbs their nose and says, you know, I don't care. Anyway.
Yeah, I'm just thinking we're not my thoughts are, we're not quite there yet to be ready to figure out how to make this work and that we should just not allow it until it gets a little more.
But should we make a rule that you cannot do that?
Yeah, we need to have, if we're not ready for that yet, then we need to put something in place that says you can't use
That's my thought. I don't think we're ready for it yet, we're I think we still gotta figure it out, how they should be used, the requirements behind them, what kind of is there a kind of engineering that may need to be required with them? How do we dress them up? I think that's still a lot of questions and it's gonna take some time to figure that out, and until then, that we should just have something that doesn't allow us how they could be used. And we may even want some community feedback because you know, visually impacts residents.
Okay, so what happens if someone builds their lot just with rows and rows of these storage units? Can we do that now?
Well, they're they'd be limited by the percentage of a lot that can be covered by a building. So there's one safeguard there, but.
But still, if you're living next to someone who has.
They cannot make it like a commercial storage activity.
Right.
Commercial activities are not allowed.
They have to have a conditional use permit and that the city controls that and governs that. So they couldn't set up a self-storage or, you know, renting it out or something like that.
You know, uh personal experience. And I live in Southern Arizona, Saravistan, and I had Mr. Shed another shed on my on my lot. And I decided and I, not a permit and everything, you know, I have nothing there. I decided it wasn't big enough. And I wanted to make it bigger. And so I took off the end and I expanded it out. I can't remember, eight feet. Spent eight feet longer than it was. And I came home from work one day and there was a cease and desist order. Saying, uh-uh, no you won't. And so I prepared plans and took them into the city, not a rule, so I could finish it. We can do that here, why don't we? Why don't we put out cease and desist orders when somebody does something that is clearly not covered in at all ordinances? They don't come in for a permit?
I got one. When I was building my house.
Over what?
I still give Corbett a hard time about this. No, and it was my fault. It's when we started framing, you have to have, it's required city, you have to have a dumpster and a toilet there at your site. Well, I called a company and got them ordered, well, they delivered the toilet, but they didn't have a dumpster available then. So they said, we'll have one to you like tomorrow, and tomorrow came, never happened, I called them, well, we're have one to you tomorrow, and tomorrow came and never had one. This one over like a week, and I'm calling every day trying to get it there. Corbett finally called me and said, sorry, you're done, cease work until you have a dumpster there. I'm like, okay, yeah, no problem, so I called another company that day and got it, got it delivered, but
Yeah.
It was my fault, so.
And Craig, our fire chief, he he's our city enforcement, so he looks at those things and usually most get resolved with the face to face and understanding or says, okay, within a week or two weeks, depending on what it is. And so there aren't a lot of issuances of those kinds of things, the city does, I mean, the city's looking for compliance, it's not looking to beat everybody up with citations and whatnot, so they do do that from time to time.
Apparently haven't done it.
No.
Nor have we followed up anymore on the one that when we had the agreement that he would press out.
So if we, if we said that they were not allowed, what happens to the two people that have them?
They're allowed, because there's, yeah, yeah, because there's no, nothing against them at the time. So we just live with that. No, the one, the one is questionable because he didn't get a permit, he just moved a container on his lot and stored his stuff in there, so.
But the other one did get a permit?
Yeah.
And if it's an accessory building, you have to have a site plan approval.
So we'll have, the city will have to deal with that that one. And if the other person doesn't.
Anyway.
Yeah. But if the person doesn't do what was approved for him to do with this other one, the accessory building, then this kind of thing can, he can be ticketed or whatever and told to remove it and whatnot, so. What, John, are you still there?
He went to sleep.
I am. Any thoughts on this?
I think semi-trailers are a mistake, and I think you need to nip these containers as soon as you can so that you avoid what you guys are talking about. And whatever you're gonna do, just get it clarified now, so moving forward, you don't have to undo stuff. But I think the semi-trailers are a mistake, I think you need to nip that now.
Well, we could nip both of them and then down the road, you know, if we once we give some more thought to the container issue and.
I've seen those containers, they build them custom and they make them look actually pretty good, pretty nice. They look like a nice accessory building, but until you get to a point where you can determine how that comes about in your code and what you're gonna require, then I think we just need to nix it until we figure that out.
I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's that commercial building, but we're in.
Springville. No, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, the guy, was Ivory Homes that built that one or, what's the home builder down there, the big one? I can't think of his name.
Yeah, I know who you mean.
Yeah, it's not Ivory, but it's a.
Salisbury?
Salisbury.
I'm in Salisbury, yeah. Yeah.
Yep. Our, well, let's let's follow through with the motion and.
I would propose then that we modify I I don't think we ought to cut out all shipping containers as accessory buildings, but I think we ought to cut out a semi trailer as an accessory building. And and leave the other kinds of shipping containers. The require, require a site plan and permit in order to use a shipping container as a storage unit.
Where do you want to?
Dress up.
Question is, though, is how, what are we gonna require for them to dress it up? I
And that.
That's kind of my question, I think until we figure that out we gotta not allow them until we can figure out what we want, for sure.
That potentially becomes a problem. I don't know if this, the new state legislation that passed having to do with cities controlling design of things, if that extends to accessory buildings or just primary residences. That's another thing that we'd need to explore. But anyway, I'm not sure what we can control.
To me, a semi and a shipping container look the same.
Light off?
Maybe structural, but they look the same.
Say again, John?
I didn't say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that Larry?
Oh, now he just muted again.
I don't know. Marcus Arthur? Are you there?
Yes. Larry Henry.
You're incognito, huh?
Using using my, the computer of my son-in-law.
Okay.
Huh, that's a good idea, I'm gonna change my name, it zooms.
Uh, you have any thoughts, Larry, on this?
Well, I think what what Ted has said and and Severin, I concur with. I think John is right on point with with semi-trailers and et cetera. They they have no place in Woodland Hills, in my opinion. End of story.
You're okay with containers? You'd be very happy to have somebody put a shipping container next to your house?
No. Well, of course not, but if it meets the the building code, then it meets the building code.
Okay.
So if it meets the building code, what would have to be done?
It's accessory building, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Site plan approval?
But it doesn't mean anything structural or?
Well, it can't be more than two feet high.
That's the next question that we're gonna be talking about is the height of an accessory building. I mean, right now, there's no, there's really no standards.
There is, all it has, you have to submit a site plan that shows its dimensions from the property lines for an accessory building. And if it's over two hundred square feet, right, then it's an accessory building.
It can be under two, but if it's under, it doesn't need a building permit, it still needs a site plan.
Oh, that's right, it doesn't need a building. That's right, because I'm keeping mine right at one ninety-nine, so.
Well, we've got a motion here that Severin made.
About no on his motion?
No, there's been no second to it yet, so. And I actually haven't called for a second, but.
I I don't, I don't disagree with the, that thought. I think that's something that can happen, I just, my only concern is we're not quite there yet to what we're gonna require from a shipping container. Because if you go to someone and says, okay, yeah, you can have one as long as you go through the proper channels and dress it up.
Yeah, that might be.
Yeah, what does that mean, dress it up? So do we need to put then some sort of something in the code that says, well, here's what it has to be, and I don't know if we're there yet to say, let's approve it if they dress it up, I think we gotta determine that. And so I'm thinking we just, my my thought would be that we, some point we may, but let's figure it out and then and then come back.
I mean, we could. I mean, I'll change my motion. I withdraw my motion, I'll make a new motion. I move that we in the accessory building ordinance restricts eliminates use of shipping containers or semi-trailers as accessory buildings.
With, of course, this doesn't need to be part of the motion, but your views are, and let's study that a little bit more, see what other. No, I know, I'm just, I'm just, okay.
Okay, I'll second that.
Okay, so we've got a motion and second to disapprove shipping containers and semi trailers as accessory buildings. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Larry vote?
Yeah, Larry voted aye.
Okay. Thanks, Larry.
Okay, so we'll, we'll look at that then.
We just hate to get ourselves in a situation like we sometimes do and say, yeah, let's let's go ahead with this, but then we don't really think through the whole thing.
Yeah, I.
Before we race, I think we just gotta think through it more before we.
Yeah. You know, and the more.
Well, let's, let's let it simmer for a month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can talk about it next month and see whether or not we feel still feel that we should. we should move forward in the city council. I don't have a problem with that.
The more, personally, the more I deal with these ordinances, the more, I guess I'm hesitant to. Change them or modify them. Without a lot of thought and review, you know.
No. This really isn't lying here, is it?
No, it is. It is.
Do we need to have a public hearing?
Well, we know, cause we're, well, mm, yeah. Cause we're, yeah.
So that's not.
We'll have a public hearing, yeah. Yeah.
So public hearing is different from public comment?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll have to publish that we're gonna have a.
We have to announce it.
We're changing that accessory ordinance. I'll confirm that. It's a good point, Severin, to make sure that we do have it. I think we do.
It gives us another month to think about it.
Yeah.
Hey, Wayne, can I ask you a question, Wayne?
Sure.
Could we look at other communities that you might respect and see what they say about semis and, and storage bill, storage bin?
For Woodland Hills, we look down on all the rest.
Just a question.
Good point, yeah, and we should do that and see what they've done and draw up on their, their experience and, and so forth, like, you know, we don't wanna take as much time as we did with the private roads though, but.
And I mean that physically, not judgmentally.
Divide up communities or maybe even, and we'll all look at a certain city and see what they do.
Yeah, okay, yeah, we'll do that. Yeah, you made it well, I won't make them accessory building, just make them regular commercial building.
We have to look at places like Woodland Hills, not Provo or.
You can see Heber or Mid, Midway or see what some of those smaller. How can these have done?
Immigration Canyon, Sundance, you know, people like us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Setbacks on corner lots. I thought I knew what Severin wanted to do and intended, and I started looking at it again and then I am having, I'm not understanding. So if you wouldn't mind explaining your thoughts again, here's a whiteboard. If you wanna do a diagram up there and help me to understand, and this is my thought. I'm thinking that our ordinance already covers this. Here.
All right.
It's like the invisible pen.
This is very.
Is that the only pen?
This is, yeah, this, yeah, it is. You shoot out a white pen? Hang on, hang on, there's Laurie's, let's go get another. Now it's getting a little better. Hey Laurie, I think we're good.
All right. So the way your answer reads now, this is, as a notice, all right? This is right across the street from my house, almost. Anyway, this lot is point six nine acres. This one, I think, is point eight oh. Now, one of the things that John talked about, and it actually says it in the current ordinance, is that corner lots should be larger than the normal lots. My lot is point seven seven. Fifty foot setback, both sides.
Which is your front? That's the front of your lot?
Well, just kidding. It's, it's, it's fifty feet, whether it's the front or not, cause it's the corner, right?
Okay, that's.
Now, what, what we've gotta determine then is what's the back? And if, if the front door is on this side, the back is here. The front door's on this side, the back is here. All right, okay. Now, this lot. The setback here is fifty. The setback here is fifteen. Back here. Is thirty. And this is fifty. Now, so this is fifty, let's say the front door is on either side. So as it stands now, this is thirty feet. This is probably not the best example, but. This one. And this, and this one, the front door is over here. Now this.
So you got a street there?
This is street, this is Woodland Hills. Okay? Now this is fifty feet. This is fifty feet. This is thirty feet. This one is fifty. Okay? Now, what I'm saying is when you've got a little lot here that's only point six nine acres, that's smaller than my lot. My lot has fifty feet on each side, fifty in front, thirty in the back. Okay? This corner lot. Instead of being fifteen feet on the side. It's thirty five feet more you're taking off of where they can build a house. And so you're shrinking where they can build their house significantly. My proposal is, and in this case, since this one's fifteen, this one is fifteen. This one's fifteen, so this one's fifteen. You're adding basically fifteen feet, the whole width, more than they can build on, and they are no closer to the house here or the house here than what it is anywhere else in the development.
So you're changing the rear setback?
Yes, you're not, you're not, I didn't propose, we changed the front, I understand.
On the side?
It's the safety issue. Whether the front or the front, you know, what's on the corner are the full fifty feet. And it's the safety issue, so that you've got the sight lines that are, you know, if you're up here, the sight lines, it's only fifteen feet, sight lines are significant, you know, thirty five feet less, sight line. And it just, to me, it gives, I mean, if we were in a new PUD and we've said, okay, developer, you've got corner lots, those corner lots needs to be significantly bigger than your other lots that you can have. So if this one is point eight oh, this one better be point nine oh, or what, we could figure out what, what the difference is.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, that's my thought.
So, so the setback goes on the rear from?
Thirty feet to fifteen. You're really looking at what the other lot next to it is, and whatever that setback is here, is the same here. Here to here, here to here.
It's only the rear setback that is being changed.
Yes.
Not the side or the front.
And if they decide to put their front door, I guess the same thing applies if their front door comes off Woodland Hills Drive, then you would put that one, that would automatically be fifteen that you changed.
This one, this one would then.
Yeah. Say like, they put their front door here, now this would be fifteen instead of thirty, this would already be fifteen.
That's right.
So you're still, you're just growing it this way now instead of this way?
Yes. I mean, that's basically this one, this and the front door is here.
I was trying to.
If the front door here is here, then it's the same as this one.
Yeah.
But then they're the same, but if, if the front door is here, you've still got, this would be the back, and since this one is fifteen, then this one is fifty. So every, like, these lots down here that are not on a corner, this is fifteen, this is, this is thirty. This is fifty. And this is fifty now. So you're, you're thirty feet away on everything where, you know, on that side, that side you are, the same thing, same side you are. Okay? Okay, is that, is that better understood?
Yeah. Okay. Cause I was reading the definition that I had you do, and I think if, look, after we make it clear it's a rear setback that we're changing, not the side, that's, that's where I was getting confused.
How, how big are the smallest lots in Woodland Hills?
R119. Those are the smallest.
And how big are those?
But this one's.
Nineteen thousand square feet, so what's that, just under half acre? Or is that?
Yeah, it's a little less than half an acre. Half acre would be twenty-two-five more or less.
Yeah. Forty-three, five sixty is an acre.
And this is, these are R2 PUD.
Yeah, so they could be smaller.
They could down, be down to half an acre.
Yeah.
But it's a half an acre up.
Okay. Okay, thanks Severin. We'll put that on September agenda for a public hearing, along with this other, we need to do that, so. Okay. The last thing is accessory building height.
Where did I get the seventeen feet from? Isn't it in there?
It is.
Oh, it isn't?
Yeah.
Okay.
It, it reads seventeen feet, here's what it says, no detached accessory building in a residential district shall exceed seventeen feet in height. The height of the accessory building shall not exceed seventeen feet as measured from the floor of the accessory building to any part of the exterior of the roof of the accessory building. Exactly.
Oh.
Not the interior of the roof?
All right.
So you could marry, you could measure to an eve. Yeah, if that's what, yeah, and we need to be more definitive with that. Cause you could, you could take it to the eve, that, if you want, that's, that's part of the roof and it says any part of the exterior of the roof. So, you know, they could go up from that wherever.
I mean, this is, this is kinda like what those two houses did to us, where they, where the old building height.
Mm-hmm.
Was midway from the eve.
Yeah.
Between that and the peak.
And the peak.
And it had two levels of eve, and they chose the lower eve, and so the height was to there where the, the peak of the roof was really up here.
Yeah.
We couldn't do anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, did you say there was someone who wanted to build a large, I can't remember, garage or, or a, like a guest?
Yes.
House type thing?
We've got a couple of people who have expressed interest in doing that, but those in what they're planning won't fall into a category of accessory building.
Why is that? Because they're.
Because they're gonna be occupied.
Connected, oh.
And if they're less, if they're less than twenty feet for the main residence, they have to comply with regular building code.
Okay.
House for a house as well.
So they have eating and. Insulation.
TVs?
Yeah.
You always have to have those in.
So what are your thoughts? What should we change this to?
Highest point of the roof for someone?
We get garages or we get shops, people are building, you know, twenty by twenty, I mean, they're pretty large. They're just gonna potentially have to limit their roof pitch. If they're approaching that.
I need to measure mine and see how.
Can we just copy our height wording for building height? Would that cover everything?
I, I'd like to make it more simpler.
No, I, I think.
Than accessory building.
I think from the floor to the highest peak.
Of the roof?
You've got a normal roof or normal story height is what, nine feet?
Mm-hmm.
So that potentially gives them, six feet is not a lot of.
Be eight feet. Eight feet, right?
That's it.
Pardon? Be eight feet, right?
That's it.
If it was nine and eight is seventeen.
Yeah, 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 okay, I'm sorry.
Is that enough for someone to park a semi, not a semi, like a camping trailer or something? To meet their needs that way? I don't have a camping.
Cause a normal RV, I think they're looking at like a fourteen foot height. Uh, for, while the big, one of these big RVs.
Right down here, is that an accessory building? Is that just a cover?
Yeah.
Right here.
It's a carport.
That has an RV in it.
Used to have a RV.
They're used to, yeah.
Yeah. That's the kind I'm thinking, maybe approaching fourteen feet tall, but that might be stretching it a bit. But. When I, all these, these car washes and your drive-throughs, fast food, off, they have often fourteen foot maximum height. So that's what I'm thinking, you know, allow RV to pull in there or a trailer.
Yeah.
So I think the wording, like Severin suggested, should be changed to be from the floor to the highest point of the roof or highest peak of the roof. Now, I guess the question is, is seventeen feet high enough?
Right.
Because if it used to be something, say, if they measured to the midpoint or a lower point, then maybe they're, they were actually twenty feet or something like that, twenty-five feet to the peak.
Yeah.
So we need to raise the height if we're gonna make the peak the maximum, is that the question?
To make it clear, you know, and not make you ask the middle of this or that to the peak.
So what is the right height if we go to the peak?
Yeah.
Sure is possible that you can fit your RV in.
Yeah.
So if an RV is fourteen and you put a. What are most roofs, pitch-wise? Yeah, nine twelve or something like that. But it would depend on how big, it'd depend on how big the building is, depending on actually how your pitch.
That's twelve?
The span, will it, all times determine the pitch of the roof?
I mean, my, the roof on my house is twelve by twelve. It's twelve feet up, or we're twelve feet across. You cannot have that steep of a roof on a, and stay within the seventeen feet.
No. That's why we were just wondering if we need to raise that height.
Hey, John, you're, you're a builder. What do you think on this?
So are you considering all garages, non, or detached garages as accessory buildings?
Generally, yes. I mean, that lot, it, give, give them an allowance so they can store an RV in there or a trailer, if that's what they, they wouldn't get more than that, I don't think.
Yeah, I mean, an RV or a trailer, you're gonna need a.
Yeah, I mean, an, an RV or a trailer, you're gonna need a fourteen foot door, you're gonna need another foot and a half above that for a header, and then your trusses are gonna go on top of that. Um, so. Yeah, your seventeen isn't gonna give you much to work with.
So what do you, what do you think, twenty feet, twenty-five feet to the peak?
Twenty's better than seventeen, but it's still pushing it. I, I guess my question is, is. So if somebody's gonna build a two-car garage out back for their RV, or somebody's gonna build a shed in the back, both of those fall under the accessory building height, is that correct?
Yes, generally, yes.
Because for a shed, seventeen's plenty height, um, twenty's not gonna be high enough for somebody who wants to park a big monstrosity in the back. Yeah, you'd be closer to twenty-five probably if you're gonna allow somebody with a fourteen foot door on there.
Yeah.
I mean, do we have a minimum or a maximum roof pitch requirement for accessory buildings?
No.
Just a snow load.
Yeah, which they can engineer, well, you see, I've got homes up here by me being built with flat roofs now, so they can engineer stuff.
I've got flat roofs.
That's true.
Just have to use off big.
Yeah.
Two by twelves would I had to use.
Yeah, so I'm.
So.
Near them, but most people aren't gonna go a flat roof for an accessory building, for the most part.
Right. And they'll, and they'll build what they want to build it for, we, we just want to give them a, a height within reason, you know, but, uh.
Twenty-five is pretty good.
Somebody doing a fourteen foot door with a flat roof will probably make the seventeen foot requirement, but that's it.
Yeah, so you, you think a twenty-five would give enough space to build a fourteen door and have a good pitch on the roof?
I mean, let's say it's a four twelve pitch, see, a lot of it's gonna depend on the width of the accessory building, which is mandated by the tax, but that's gonna vary from lot to lot on what size building you can put back there. I mean, obviously, shot, or, or less high is better, because soon as somebody puts a garage out back, they're gonna impact their neighbors' views, you know, that's gonna be a big issue.
Yeah, but it won't be any taller than the house, so.
No, no. But it's gonna be, but it's gonna be closer to a property line, because, I mean, what's your minimum setback on an accessory building?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Or it can be.
Because a house is gonna be thirty to fifty feet from property line, your accessory building, I think, is tighter than that, right? Can't you go as close as ten?
Fifteen.
It can be right on the.
Yeah, it could be fifty.
Yeah. And that.
Yeah, so.
Accessory building can be.
It could be five.
Yeah, it can be closer.
So, I mean, as a neighbor, I wouldn't want a twenty-five foot high garage five feet off the property line, that, that would, so this is where it gets to be complicated. I mean, our terrain up here for people to build outbuildings, to put fifth wheels in, I've seen more creative things done up here than I've ever seen in my life. On, on what people do to park pieces of equipment up here that shouldn't be parked up here, they're so big. Um, so people get creative.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got one next door, but it's attached to the house at least, so. I wouldn't go more than twenty-five, twenty's gonna be pushing it, I mean.
Yeah.
Something at a three twelve pitch is not gonna give you a whole lot to work with, because if you're twenty foot wide, ten feet at a three twelve.
I'm liking the five.
Yes, uh, uh, twenty's gonna be tight.
Twenty-five kind of, not only, it keeps it down, but limits a little bit of the size too, to keep it.
I don't know, maybe you look at twenty-two, twenty-three, I, I'd say twenty to twenty-five is probably a minimum max, twenty's gonna be tight, twenty-five should make, should work for anything. But if you could get away with a twenty-two or twenty-three, I, I guess somebody'd have to run some math on that.
In theory, right now, someone can build a twenty-five.
Who?
Anybody with an accessory building, we say seventeen to the roof, they could build a twenty-five foot high right now.
Yeah.
Easy, yeah, and still meet our code.
Yeah. And now, they'll, they'll build, I mean, the twenty-five might be a limit, but there'd be very few of those, they'll build what they want to store, you know, if it's an ATV, I mean, they're not interested in building more than what they, what they need.
Um, and most, most people aren't gonna go that high if they're trying to put something small in there.
Yeah. What else, you say twenty-five?
I'm okay with that number.
Comfortable with that?
Okay. What's that?
Larry likes twenty-four.
Larry likes twenty-four.
Larry likes twenty-four, so do I like twenty-four.
I'm good with twenty-four.
Say twenty-four?
The highest peak of the roof at twenty-four.
Yeah.
From the floor to the highest peak.
I would change it from highest peak to highest point. Because somebody could put a cupola up there or something else, and then you're gonna have all another debate, so I.
The highest point.
Highest point.
Shouldn't have chim, he's ringing like that on it, so highest point, yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, somebody will find something to put up there that will go past the peak and still meet your criteria, so just say the highest point, so.
Yeah. Okay.
All right.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
Okay, we'll make that part of our.
Next month's.
Next month, uh, public hearing meeting as well. So, okay, are there any other issues that? Need to discuss or bring up or talk about?
I move that we adjourn.
Okay.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. At, uh, let's see, eight, one, eight forty-one. Well, we beat last month's time. Okay, yep.